Morning. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for August 16, 2023. Following the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to ask people to remain standing for a brief moment of silence. I'll explain it afterwards. So if you don't mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So over the past few weeks, the county has lost two of its employees very suddenly, one from Department of Corrections and one from General Services. So we're just going to ask in memory of thoughts and prayers for their families and friends and coworkers and thanks for their dedication to the people of this county. We'll ask for a moment of silence in their memory. All right, we have a few presentations today as we have made it a practice at our second meeting of the month. We do employee recognition for employees who have reached certain milestones of employment. And today, from one of our district courts, she served in two different courts currently with Judge Wizlosky, but previously with Judge Burns, we have celebrating 30 years of service to the people of this county is Karen Osman. Is Osman? Yeah, I've got something for you, and you're more than welcome to speak. Sure?
Do I just?
Yep, yeah.
I just want to thank you, and it's been a pleasure working for the county for these last 30 years.
Well, thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have Evan Stone from our Planning Commission. He's going to talk about the Bucks 2040 photograph contest and announce some winners.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be speaking about something that's fun today. Randy, you could go to the next slide, please. So as you may recall, as part of our Bucks 2040 Comprehensive Plan update, we thought it would be a great idea to ask the residents of the county to submit photos and we would have a photo contest. The photo contest closed just about a year ago. And while I would have liked that we had gotten tons and tons of photographs, what we wound up with was we had 17 individual submitters, and among those submitters, we had well over 80 photographs to pick from. And we had a number of the entrants that submitted in multiple categories to pick from. The categories that we had were architecture of buildings and barns, cool stuff and other things, drone shots and aerials, historic places, landscape nature, my neighborhood, and scenic vistas. So without further ado, I'm going to go into the winners. Randy, next slide. So the winner selection, we collected all the photographs, we submitted them to the commissioners, and we asked the three of you to select your favorites. And then staff and I worked our magic to correlate the selections. And where needed, we made some executive decisions for tiebreakers and so forth. And we came up with a slate that we thought was really well represented. We had, in each category, there were three prizes: first place, second place, third. And then we also had a grand prize winner for a membership, a contributor membership to the Minshler Museum. Next slide, please. So in our first category, architecture, buildings and barns, our first winner is Don Bierisch. I realized afterwards, one of the things, if I had to do it over again, I would have asked for was a description or a location of the place. Some of them you'll recognize, some of them we'll have to find out where they were. Our second place winner, again, Don Bierisch. I think everybody recognizes this location. And our third place winner, and again, I'll take the opportunity today, is the beginning of the Grange, and I believe this is the barn at the Grange. And I encourage everybody to come check out the Grange, check out the BCPC table and all the others for the county. Our next category, cool stuff and other things, our first place winner, Beverly Wolf, obviously from a car show. Great little shot. Our second place winner, Cindy Kunis, I think we all know where this one is as well. Reenactment of the Crossing of the Delaware, great picture. And our third place by Catherine Torone, I believe this was Peace Valley Park. Really great photograph. I love the colors of the kayaks. Really stood out nicely. In our third category, drone shot scenarios, we had no submissions. I was really surprised. I thought with the abundance of drones, we'd see some, but we did not get any. In historic places, our first place winner, Don Bierisch, a great shot of the New Hope train station. Second place, again, Don Bierisch, great shot of the locks on the canal. And our third place, again, Don Bierisch, a great shot of the inside of the Mercer. Don was very busy. Our fifth category, landscape and nature, our first place winner was Michael Frank, great shot of a sunflower field. Our second place was Catherine Torone, great shot of the canal. Third place, Don Bierisch, great bluebird shot. In the category of my neighborhood, our first place winner, Beverly Wolf, great streetscape, red maple, fall. And then in scenic vistas, first place was Michael Frank, great shot of the, I believe this is the New Hope Bridge. Second place, Bill Robinson, not sure which of our parks this was taken at, but it's a great shot. And third place went to Bill Robinson, really cool fall picture, great reflection, really nicely composed. And then lastly, our grand prize went to Michael Frank with the sunflower field shot. And we thank all of our participants. These pictures will be used in our Comprehensive Plan document as well as on the website. And thank you all, and thank you to the commissioners for supporting the initiative.
Yeah, thank you.
Evan, I have one question. Is it too late to enter a picture for the drone thing? I got a nice picture of St. Catherine Drexel Shrine taken from a drone that I could enter if it's not too late. No commissioner exemption?
We'd be happy to take it.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. It's really great. And it's a lot of, obviously some talented people. And we did a similar, we did a program in Falls Township when I was there, similar thing, photo contests. And we had some amazing photographers from some, curious, I didn't see any of their names. I think they're just kind of getting some awareness of this will be sort of, will grow, it'll grow, and it'll definitely become, you know, an even better program than it already is. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. A few months ago, the county's area agency on aging hosted the Bucks Senior Games. And we are proud to have some, you know, a chance to recognize the events and the people who carried it off and the participants. And Kathy Bennett from the AAA is here.
Great. Thank you, commissioners, very much. Pleasure to be here. And thank you for this opportunity to highlight the senior games that were held this year from May 31st to June 10th. It was our 40th year of providing the games. On our website, if you're interested, we have a compilation video of the past 40 years of the games. So it's really kind of interesting to see some of the earlier pictures. But like most great events, they do not happen in a vacuum, and it really does take a village. Our village this year included, and my thanks to, in addition to the AAA staff, the staff from Bucks County Parks and Recreation, the staff from the Bucks County Community College, as well as the various senior center managers who held the events at some of their sites, the Bucks County Foundation for Aging board members who helped out, and the various township parks and wrecks that were part of our planning team. And of course, my sincere thanks go to the commissioners for your ongoing support of our games. We really do appreciate it. We do have a short video to share with you highlighting this year's events and activities, plus some statistics and responses from our attendee survey that we sent out this year. You may even recognize a few of the faces, so be sure to, the pictures go fast, but there's some you might want to see. And as you will see, people really do enjoy the games, and it's a wonderful opportunity to encourage social interaction and the love of games and exercise. And plus, giving out medals helps a little bit, too. One thing we never thought to plan for this year, however, were Canadian wildfires that would negatively impact the air quality and lead to cancellation of some of our outdoor events. So just so you know, to be on the safe side, next year's games, we are planning for the possibility of locusts or raining toads. So just so you know. Similar to last year, we also held an opening kickoff event a few weeks before the games started at the Newtown campus of the Community College. And we had over 175 people attend, as well as 30 vendors and sponsors, and had demonstration activities such as dance instruction, cornhole, and pickleball instruction. And so now for your viewing pleasure. Thank you, We had over 350 participants. That went kind of fast, but, and there were some pictures, just so you know. Again, for the 40th, we put some older pictures in there. In case you saw Bill McTighe, you're like, what's Bill doing? That was one of the older ones. But it really does reflect the enjoyment. And people have come for years and years. We have categories, and our 90-year age and plus has a number of different individuals that participate every year. And so all ages from 50 and above.
Okay. And it was a little quick. I didn't catch it. But it looked, just from the trends in terms of participation, obviously, there was a dip for a couple of years. But is it back up to where it was previous to, like 2019, 2018?
Yeah, we are back up again.
Great. That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank the whole staff. And it's important, I'm glad you recognized sponsors, the people who, you know, different businesses and that helped out. So it's good to recognize them, too.
It's a lot of work and a lot of great people that help with it. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, just before we get to public comment, one very, very minor typo on the agenda, just to point it out. Under Other Civics, one of the nonprofits that's listed is listed as New Creation of Life Incorporated. Should be New Creations of Life Incorporated. Again, very minor. I just want to make that, make that point. It's a reminder that when we focus on agenda items, we're looking at items that the commissioners will be voting on in this meeting. So we ask speakers to focus on those issues. First name is Beth Curcio.
Yes. Item 1B. Could you please describe what Voice and Vision and Company does? What is the consumer satisfaction team, and how is the money for the peer support services used? 2A, C, D, and E. Can someone please explain what is going on and what seems like an incredible uptick in the need for youth foster care services? The total is around $2,370,000. What is your assessment of why the need is rising so sharply? Seems like a lot since April. 6A. How are you going to spend the 38K on tuberculosis ward? Do we have an outbreak? Are we expecting one? Could it be an explandemic? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Mackhouse.
Ed Mackhouse, Bucks County, Buckingham, former teacher for 10 years, and a scientist and engineer. Talking about the problems with mental illness, mental problems. Southeast Regional Mental Health Office, we need plenty of money for mental health. There was an article in Intelligentsure yesterday that quoted Controller Pamela Van Blonk about her statement that there was an increase from 165 youth incarcerated in Bucks County to 225 youth last year, a 36% increase. So we, why is there such an increase in the people being incarcerated? As a physicist, I think we have to look at the science. Physicist, Nobel Prize physicist John Closer says that there's a lot of hysteria, trillion dollar loss due to this hysteria about climate change. He says it's, climate change is a normal thing. It's not due to the carbon. So this causes mental health.
Mr. Mackhouse, I'm sorry. What, I apologize. What agenda item are you referencing?
I'm talking about money for mental health. Item 1B, right?
1B?
Yeah. 1A, the purpose of dealing with mental health. You're taking up my time. I should have some more time to compensate for this discussion on what it is. So what are the reasons for this increase in crime, mental health, drugs? We got the Narcon thing that's good, the prescription of drugs. When I taught in the 70s, we didn't have so much drug problems. We didn't have all these vaccines causing these problems. It's comprehensible. We had Dr. Damsker here got our schools open again. Other districts didn't have Dr. Damsker. Philadelphia and Montgomery County, they were closed for an entire two years. People need someone to care for them, like teachers that care about them. And so mental health is a factor. It's a whole community thing. And this last two years under Biden, we've had the crime increase, there's less respect for law and order because his son and he making these things from China and stuff. So we have these laptops approved that they denied it. And we have this two-tiered system of justice where he doesn't protect Robert F. Kennedy Jr., with the Secret Service running against him, and he tries to throw Trump in jail. So he doesn't have any competition in election. This undermines respect for our country and our law and order when the highest elected official, supposedly elected official.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Robert McLean.
Good morning. I'm Robert McLean, Milford Township. I'll be speaking on 7C, 7D, 9A, and 14D. So 7C and D. We had this discussion last meeting about using unspent ARPA funds. Here we go again with $200,000 for Habitat for Humanity and another $200,000 for Habitat for Humanity. I do understand what's permissible under the ARPA regulations, but our country is in dire straits with its debt problem. I would have hoped that this money would have been returned, clawed back to the federal government, where it may be spent again. So, number 9A, Brian Jackman, Law Department. What legal services would Brian Jackman or Brad Jackman be rendering? And approximately how much is the maximum rate? Finally, 14, 13D, Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission. You received this opioid award. I just would like to know, who do you envision the sub grantees to be that would receive the awards? Just give me an idea of who that might be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Andy Warren.
Lady and gentlemen, tempted as I am to follow up on the ARPA thing, I'll, that wasn't on my agenda today, but I did want to speak to item number 8A. And the idea of the employee transfer and promotions, backdating that to January 1st, is that part of a union negotiation process? Or just exactly what is being backdated? What is that all about? And roughly how much is involved, if we know? And secondly, just as an ancillary item, what's the status of the special counsel? Was that reneged, not reneged, taken off? Do we still have a special counsel somewhere? It was $77,000 plus benefits, and I'm not sure whether that was rescinded or not. Just what's the status of that one? So that's 8A, just generally what's involved with that. And item 13D, I don't have a quibble with drug and alcohol receiving funding. I just wanted to make sure I understood what this was about. As I understand that this is from the Johnson opioid settlement of some billions of dollars nationwide, this would be our share, and you all have, I'm assuming you all, have chosen to spend it on these future grants. My question is, this $1.4 million, is that in addition to or instead of? For example, if there was no settlement for the opioid, would this money not have been contributed? And if so, are these taxpayer dollars that are being supplemented? That are being, these special funds used so we don't need tax dollars? Just a little deeper into that one.
Sure, thank you. Sorry, I lost my place. Leave last block? Oh, no, sorry, it's general. Liz Yous?
Liz Yous, Northampton Township. 5B, General Services, approved lease of county property in Hatfield. What are you leasing this property for? 7F and G, approve extension of emergency solutions grants. There is no price here. How much is that being extended? 10A. Approved contract increase to, and extension to provide hair care services at Nishami Manor. How many people does this $22,800 haircutting service help? And is it on a recurring schedule? I see that it says 0% county. Where is the money coming from? And number 14, Pearl Buck Foundation, a donation of $20,000. Please detail how this money is going to be spent. Thank you.
Okay, Lori Katz?
Good morning. 12A, my question is, what is the county's involvement with Robin Staff Kirkland Farm? Please explain how much of that 119 acres the county is getting for $150,000? And what do you plan to do with the land? Right now, a local farmer crops the fields and boards his horses and cows in the pasture. How will that affect him and his income? I'm also wondering if the land is preserved by the county. Is that portion in danger of carbon capture, sequestration, pipelines easily being placed on that land, which would render it unfit to farm? Are farmers being made aware ahead of time about that this is something that Pennsylvania is interested in? Please explain. 13A, approved memorandum of understanding to use opioid settlement funding for the co-responders programs. Who are the programs with and is it an organization or individuals? My other question is regarding corrections. What is the success rate of this heart drug and alcohol program? Public safety matters, law and order matters. It is the foundation of civil society. Without that, you have Gotham. Mental health is dynamic and complex. I'd love to have a public discussion about this, maybe an evening town hall here, where the voting public can address their concerns. What I'd like an explanation on is why Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Marsaglia denied Sheriff Haran eight new sheriffs to take Part 1 criminals off the streets. I listened to the 11222 Salary Board and was disturbed and concerned at your lack of concern for Part 1 crimes and those encompass rape, murder, kidnapping. There are 8,000 outstanding warrants that need to be served for that. This is an expert highlighting a public safety issue and you deny him and ask him to fundraise the money for these positions. That's dangerous. Do we do that of our policemen and firemen? What's going on here? Please explain why this wasn't a priority seven months ago. As well, when our public health expert says it's best to keep kids in school because they are at no risk based on statistics, their mental and social health matters. Please don't ignore guidance. Ignoring that created a mental health crisis for them and that rings forward. When we know better, we must do better. Thank you.
Just a, just a reminder, please, as I said before, if you're coming up to talk about agenda items during this comment, please stick to agenda items and not on just random things. Vanna Darmann?
Vanna Darmann, Plumstead. I have a question about number 6. I don't see Dr. Damsker here, but maybe someone else could answer. I'm wondering for the tuberculosis grant award, how that's used and what, what the current situation is in the, in the county. I, I'm aware that tuberculosis is an issue, especially in areas where there's a lack of access to sanitation and things like that. And it's, it's been like that for a long time. In fact, that was, tuberculosis around the world is actually a real, a real issue, a real pandemic. But I'm curious how that's going to get used and what the situation is in Bucks. Number 8A, regarding the human resource policies. And I'm just wondering if those policies are available for us to look at and how we see them. And I'm curious about what kinds of, you know, are, are employees continue to be forced to take experimental mRNA technology if they don't want to and can remain employed? Are employees who maybe had to leave their job because they didn't want to do that, are they being hired back? And I'm wondering if that's part of that. Number 9A, Brad M. Jackman Law Firm. Is this a renewal? Is this somebody that we, we've worked with? And I'm just wondering what it is for, what these law, what this law firm is for. And I also was curious with number C, with civics. I imagine that the Pearl Buck Foundation made with that amount of money, $20,000, some sort of reasoning, how that money might be used and why it's needed. And I would like to know what they plan to do with it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. Those are all the names for the agenda. Just going through some of the answers. 1B, the Voice and Vision.
It's at the state requirement that we have to do a polling of, of people who've been treated in the mental health system. And we have to do it. And a peer, peer support is exactly what it says. It's peer support. Go to the next one. I'm done with that.
2, in terms of foster care, it's funny, I was driving somewhere, where I was driving recently and saw a billboard asking people, you know, to be foster parents. It's something that, I made multiple comments about this over the past few months for people who keep questioning, you know, why we're, you know, giving money for foster care. And, you know, certainly if you're interested in being a foster parent, we certainly have need of foster parents. We don't have to be sending people to different counties. So we have young people who, you know, for, you know, reasons beyond their control, aren't able to stay in their homes. And so we're trying to do what we can to help them.
Can I add something to that? This is not an increase in foster children. I don't know how that was, came up. This is not an increase in foster children. This is an increase in how much the agency is charging us.
Couple of questions about TB. So the grant we get for the effort to fight tuberculosis is used for treatment, screening, and case investigation. So. Terms of 7C and D, the county has partnered with Habitat on ways to improve affordable housing in this county, to assist people who are still trying to recover from, you know, the economic slowdown that affected us especially a couple of years ago. And so we'll continue to do this. These are two different properties that'll be purchased and they're purchased under the Community Land Trust, which means that this is a model that we started using to make sure that even when the property is sold, it still remains at an affordable rate so it can be sold to another family who can afford it. And the range, in case you're curious, is people who would qualify for this kind of housing and do include, in this county, people who are starting out as police officers, starting out as teachers, starting out as nurses. They qualify under the income requirements for this kind of housing. So yes, we have quite a few crises in this, in this country. Housing is definitely one of them. And this county is being affected by it quite severely. So. Couple of questions about 9, which is Mr. Jackman. I'll turn to Ms. Fitzpatrick to discuss that.
Thank you, Commissioner. So first, as background, I'll address some earlier questions about legal services generally. In 2020, the Board of Commissioners received a recommendation from their transition team to largely bring legal services in-house, both for efficiency and to save taxpayer resources. Since that time, our law department has grown and changed from lawyers who previously held outside positions but worked part-time for the county to lawyers who work full-time for the county. That's been a process of transition and slowly hiring and trying to right-size the legal needs so that we're not overstaffed and have attorneys sitting around. But if we're ever understaffed, we do still need to utilize outside counsel on occasion, either for particular areas of expertise, think bankruptcy, the county doesn't have a need to have a full-time bankruptcy attorney, or based on bandwidth of our department, as I said, so we're never overstaffed and wasting taxpayer resources. Mr. Jackman in particular, before the county brought representation of the Children and Youth Agency in-house, Mr. Jackman was the attorney, the outside counsel who represented the agency. As such, he, he in 2020, wasn't placed on a list of law firms that the commissioners approved as outside counsel. And so here, he's, his firm is being added to the list, frankly, for a very discreet representation that involves a case he previously handled and relates to an estate matter, which, as you might imagine, we also don't have estate expertise in our law department because that isn't a typical need of the county. With regard to maximum rates, in 2020, when the commissioners approved a list of law firms, they also set a list of maximum rates. And those rates were based on whether state or federal litigation was likely to be involved and what the complexity of a matter might be. I hope that answers your questions. So the maximum rate per hour ranges from $150 to $350 based on matter type. It's, it's divided by subject.
Thank you. Appreciate that. With a couple of questions about 13D, which as you can see under regular agenda, we're going to have a presentation on that. So the people who are going to be presenting are going to do a much better job than I can of presenting it. What I will say, addressing Mr. Warren's question in terms of the money, the money that we're spending is money that's coming from the, the various manufacturers and distributors of, you know, opioids who have settled. And so this is not taxpayer money. This is not money that we would have normally. This is excess money that's coming, just similar to what happened with the tobacco companies and them having to pay, or, you know, Volkswagen when they did their thing with the, you know, the emissions, you know, falsification or fraudulent activity, whatever you want to call it. It's the same process. So. In terms of, drop that one off. The, couple of questions about the human resources policy. Ms. McKevitt?
You're correct, this is related to union, but also non-union. It is also related to employee transfers and promotions. When they would, would leave that, a position that capped out their vacation time. If they moved into another position with a lower cap, it is ensuring that these folks don't lose that vacation time. And that's the extent of the policy.
All right, thank you. Question about 5B, which is the property, 30 Church Road. This is the county, over the decades, obtained parcels and properties that actually also contain houses, regular single-family houses. And so we, those are rented out as a matter of revenue. They are county properties, but, you know, so we are essentially the landlords. That's the case in this situation. So the people you see are essentially just, you know, entering into a lease with the county to lease a home on that property. Question about 7F and 7G, these are just extensions of existing contracts. They total, the ESG funding we're getting in these two situations total about $1.4 million. That was the original, you know, so this is essentially helping us get to a point where we can continue that expenditure. In terms of 10A, questions about the hair salons for those. So Nishami Manor has 300 patients? Yeah, about, almost about 400 beds essentially, some are 300, 400 beds. So that's a mixture of people who are there on assistance and people who are there privately. So for people who are there on medical assistance, the Nishami Manor does provide one free hairstyling or haircut per month, per resident. And so that is what this is counting toward. It's why it's zero in terms of expenditures and it's roughly how many people. And obviously I don't know how many people of the current residents are there on the private funds or are there through assistance. I don't have that information, but that's basically where we're coming from. So, did you want to talk about Pearl Buck? Go ahead.
Just with regard to Pearl Buck. This, this money comes from the hotel tax and this is before me that the commissioners have always given them $20,000 every year. And Pearl Buck is a wonderful home that I encourage people to visit. It's a tourist site, but it is full of history and I can take great care of it. So it's an annual contribution.
Right. They also do amazing programming. They've, they've specially, over the past few years, started doing amazing programming, partnering young people in America with young people overseas to, so they can, they can learn more about each other. As people who do, who know anything about Pearl Buck and what she did in terms of highlighting issues in Asia especially, from her time there, and bringing, you know, orphans from Asia to America so they could have better lives. And so it's very much still in, in the mindset of what she started doing in her life. So. In terms of the question about the farm preservation, this is a continuation of a program that started decades ago here in this county about preserving farmland. And so we do have a presentation on that, which we'll hear from and that they'll be able to kind of address and probably answer the questions. Question about co-responders, this is a memorandum of understanding. These are co-responders. We have talked for a couple of years now about the co-responder program. You know, so it's, it's not something new. This is, obviously, where this board decided that the best, one of the ways we could help law enforcement was to embed, you know, social workers in police departments. We literally had a giant presentation here at our last meeting with chiefs of police from dozen, about over a dozen police departments that are in this program. You know, praising the program itself and how, how it has helped them and it has helped the people of this county who, you know, you know, need, whether it's mental health services or services from the Area Agency on Aging, or drug and alcohol services, or accommodation of everything, and how this program is working. This specific memorandum of understanding is for co-responders in Upper Bucks and we're just starting now to get into Central Bucks area. So that's what that's focused on. It's, the success rate was asked about the Hope and Heart. Mr. Krass, could you comment just on, on the program itself that's on the agenda today and what it does? The Heart Program and your experience?
Thank you, Commissioner. The Heart Program is our female recovery unit. We have a male recovery called Hope. Been operating them for quite, quite a number of years. Basically, it's for opioid addicted, drug addicted folks who basically live together in the jail. They spend their days doing various program activities, working through their addiction. They spend their days doing various program activities, working through their addiction, and it culminates in a graduation, if they're here long enough, which is a good thing. Pre-COVID, we were looking at a higher retention rate of our people. They weren't coming back to jail nearly as much, about 20% less than other folks. So, it's one of our better programs for, for success rates, and it's pretty much a good deal. I mean, if the folks are going to be in the jail for three, or four, or five, or six months, let's get them together in a recovery-type setting and work on those addictions. So, that 80,000 funds helps run and staff the female recovery unit.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Getting a little bit of a digital assist from Dr. Damsker, who apparently is watching the meeting, talking about tuberculosis, and I'll just read what he wrote. We have about, we have between six and 15 active tuberculosis cases every year. Every case requires a tremendous amount of case management and directly observed medication. We also treat dozens of latent tuberculosis infection as well. The grant really doesn't cover a whole lot of our costs. And also, with regards to the 360 residents of Shanti Manor, about two-thirds are on assistance. So that goes back to the questions about the salon that provides hair care services. So, okay, thank you. All right, we will move on with our consent agenda. We're looking at the minutes from August 2nd. Is there any comments, questions, suggestions about the minutes? We'll incorporate those into the consent agenda, hearing no objections. The consent agenda is the minutes and items 1 through 11A. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Agriculture preservation, I know we have from the Preservation Board, Jim Nilson is here to talk a little about this. This is approving a county's portion of 119.715-acre agricultural conservation easement on the Robin Staff Farm located on Old Bethlehem Road in Springfield Township. So, Mr. Nilson? Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, public. Presenting to you the Robin Staff Kirkland Farm, which is located in Springfield Township. This project started in presentation back in 2009, so we're finally carrying it to the finish line today in 2023. Just a side note, I do farm property around it, not on it, but around that particular property, and also have preserved ground myself. Kirkland Farm, next slide, please. Kirkland Farm is located within Springfield Township and adds about 100-plus acres to an already-existing 700 acres of continuous preserved ground, and is in the northern part of Springfield Township in our county. Next slide. Kirkland Farm is currently carrying on with crop and pasture management on the farm. It does have some very, what I would consider historic buildings on the property, which have been very well maintained, and are in a building envelope which is not part of the present, preservation. Kirkland Farm has a thread outside of our community into New York City. The current owners of the property have ties to the New York City area, and a lot of people from outside of our communities are able to come. And I would say that Kirkland Farm is almost an ambassador to farming in Bucks County, more so than a lot of the other farms in our communities, just because of the nature of the people that visit there. Next slide. The, the farm itself is a very basic farm. We are presenting about 112 acres. There's an additional 50 acres that are involved, that are not going to be preserved in this act, but it is a very picturesque farm, and it offers very many qualities that we all like to see, that being the land value of the farm grounds itself. Next slide. In this presentation, we see that the county will be providing 149,643,80. The remaining amount will be coming from the state of Pennsylvania and the state program for the total conservation of 1.197,150. The program is, obviously, in conjunction with the state. And reminder to folks that smoke, thank you. I believe the state provides about two cents per cigarette. That provides the matching funds. And this is an important note, that the monies that the county give are matched by the state and enables us, as a program, to exist. So the monies that come in, we get approximately an extra dollar for every dollar we put in. So if we put in a million dollars, we get an additional million coming back from the county, just for, from the state, just to have our program operate. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you.
Well, just real quick, just to address one of the previous questions. So, for, you know, for, you know, we've kind of talked about this whenever we do farm preservation, but for a farm that is preserved, what kind of restrictions go on it in terms of use, and how does it affect the farmer, I guess, basically?
So, all farms that are preserved through the county and state program go through a yearly inspection to make sure that farming practices, what we consider BMPs, are being followed, and that the conservation easement language is being followed. There are some practices that are considered to be not ag practices, and we need to defend and make sure that only ag practices are being carried out on the farm. So if, and I would say we have 99% compliance with this, with all our farmers that are in. We have 244 farms currently in the program in Bucks County, and it's about 18,000 acres currently that we have. We have a great relationship with all the farmers, and obviously, the small farms that are out there are operating as niche farms, which is kind of a dying breed. But in reference to the requirements, they are asked to maintain all the standards that Penn State throws out, and in our inspections, we kind of verify that these practices are being followed. They are, need to be prerequisites in ag security, which means the types of activities on the property are protected for the farmer if they're spreading manure on the property or operating late at night trying to get the crops in before that next rainstorm, things along those lines. Also, they have to be in Act 319. Some people know it as Clean and Green, which gives them some preference in the taxing that they receive and reference to their ground, as opposed to a general landowner residential.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Nilson? Okay. I appreciate you stopping, helping us out. Thank you. It's a pleasure of the Board, just, you want to vote on this one now, or just wait and do, do the next couple altogether? Altogether? Okay. It's fine. All right, so for human services, as you can see, we have a couple of different items, and we do have Diane Rosati, who's here, and Shannon Kirby, who are both going to help us explain. And I'll just give a, well, I don't, I don't know if, were you going to talk about the opioid task force? Okay. You are? Okay. All right, I'll let you do that then.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for yielding the floor to us for a few minutes. So today, we are going to give a, I think, exciting update about the opioid settlement funds, since you can see, we have almost $1.8 million on the agenda today. I'm sorry. We have $1.8 million on, almost $1.8 million on the agenda today. So Diane Rosati did present at two previous Commissioner meetings in 2022, but again, we have some exciting updates today. So the first item, we, the opioid trust did release a guidance, Exhibit E. That is our guiding document for determining what programs are eligible. That still is in existence. They haven't provided any updates to that document, so that is still what we're using to determine if programs are eligible to be funded. And the opioid advisor committee was appointed by Commissioner Harvey. We do have a shared email address. It's OAC@buckscounty.org. That continues to receive emails for public input and comments on recommendations and any feedback that public and providers have on how to spend the funds. We have received significant community member input. We held two, hold on, public hearings in 2022. And in addition to getting significant feedback in 2022, before the opioid advisor committee plan was created on what programs we were going to put in the plan, and like I said, we continue to receive feedback today on some ideas on how to fund, on what to fund future projects. And we did have the opioid advisor committee plan approved, and it is posted on the county website, and the link is on our slideshow today. And we are, Diane Rosati is going to take over for the next few slides. So, next slide.
Thank you, Shannon. Good morning, everyone. I have the pleasure of providing an update on our progress to date on the opioid settlement plan. I did want to meet one of the questions that was asked earlier. It was a great question in terms of who are the providers that will be included. And so we have quite an extensive list of projects that the county will be managing, as well as the Drug and Alcohol Commission managing. The projects that you see before you today are the, specific to the Drug and Alcohol Commission management, and we have a wide variety of providers that either have been identified or are yet to be identified, that fall into the realm of our prevention, recovery, support, and treatment options. So it is a wide variety, not yet complete, but I'll, I'll share with you the update, and we've kind of color-coded so you can see. The peach color are projects that have launched or are about to launch, and we're so pleased about that. The projects are divided into prevention, recovery supports, and treatment. So the first project is related to alternative activities, and that can be considered things like a summer camp or formerly outward-bound type of project that's related to substance use issues. Community-based mini-grants is a significant project that is underway, and I believe that the committee, and certainly Shannon as the project manager, is a member of that committee, as well as many others. Those award letters are about to go out in the coming week, which is really exciting. We received information from the community and took every bit of that community input very seriously, and that's how we ended up with the community-based mini-grants, which are beginning to launch in September. We'll be launching evidence-based prevention projects for our schools, media campaigns, a mobile prevention education unit, and I know that that evokes a question of what that is. And that is a mock teen bedroom. We have been purchasing that service through Ben Salem, and each time we pay for that service, and so we know that we want to create our own mobile prevention unit. It shows items that have been found in teenagers' bedrooms that are related to mental health issues, substance use, human trafficking, suicidal ideation, and so on. So we know it's a great partnership with law enforcement, and we hope to launch that soon. The next item, of course, as you know, is Narcan purchase and distribution. I, of course, have with me today a Narcan kit, and today did remember to bring kits with me, so there are free Narcan kits at the back of our building, and I'll also mention that we'll be distributing them to all county employees on August 31st in honor of International Overdose Awareness Day. The next project to be launched is a nurse-family partnership, a prevention project. We'll be expanding our website in honor of what we've heard from community members, which is that they wanted better access to understand how to access services for their family members. And lastly, in prevention, expanding women and children's housing. The next area is treatment, and as you can see, those have already begun. So we are contributing through the opioid settlement project toward a multimillion-dollar project that is being built on the grounds of Doylestown Hospital, as you've already discussed several times, to meet the needs of residents with substance use or mental health or co-occurring issues who may be in crisis and in need of stabilization. There is also an increase in length of stay for treatment. I want to just use this opportunity to make sure everyone is aware, there should be no financial reason for folks to leave treatment early. Our agency and our providers have already been notified, and we're doing contracts with them to amend, to make sure that everyone is aware there is ample funding for treatment so that residents can remain in treatment as long as they'd like. And lastly, you've heard Mr. Kratz often speak about the challenges at the jail, so this is a project on medication-assisted treatment, which is, has been an ongoing, but we'll be able to expand it, which is so important to residents. We know that everyone who's at the jail, we expect, is going to be able to leave at some point, and we hope that they will leave with some recovery under their belt and the ability to assimilate into the community in a really positive way. The next category is on recovery supports. And so there are, I believe, 18 departments throughout the county. Because of what you've already learned today, the impact of social workers partnering with law enforcement is so essential. So you will see this item in a number of areas because, because it is happening in 18 departments. There are many teams out there in the community. There is drug court probation staffing, drug testing strips, which is to ensure that residents who want to test their supply of drugs, if they're using drugs for deadly fentanyl, have the ability to do that. So we are now in the process of making the purchase of the test strips and all of the materials that go along with that. On August 31st, we'll be holding a listening session with our providers to hear their interest, and we'll be launching this project in the fall. We will be funding grandfamily resources in recognition of all the challenges of grandfamilies raising their grandkids. We'll be looking at the establishment of grief support groups, housing for residents who have substance use disorders, expanding outreach, peer support, and case management. And we're so happy to say that we're in the last phase of our contract for transportation. Everyone is aware of the transportation needs in Bucks County, and for residents with substance use disorders, it is double-fold. So we'll be able to provide transportation to residents who want to access treatment. And lastly, in this category is our warm handoff, which has already started, and that is to ensure that anyone, not only who has had a near-fatal overdose and is in the hospital, but anyone who is in the hospital with a substance use issue, is tended to and offered the next service, which hopefully will be recovery supports and treatment. And the last category is administration, and that is, as you can see, significant fiscal and administrative oversight and project evaluation. The big picture is that this is a $45 million grant that the county will be receiving over the next 18 years. This is what we believe is Wave 1. There will be additional funds at some point, but certainly with the Commissioner's leadership and, and oversight, Mr. Boscola, Ms. Neff and I, and Shannon Kirby are working together to make sure that residents are well-aware of this project. We're completely committed to the transparency of the project and to making a difference in the community. These funds are really in honor of and recognition of all the folks who've been lost to opioids, and we want to make sure that we make that point and ensure that all residents understand that we're here to support them. So Shannon's going to provide a little bit of a look into the future and what our next plans are. Thank you.
So some progress to date, which we've already touched on, is the opioid advisory committee plan has been approved and, by the Board of Commissioners, and is on our county website. We have spent significant time in meetings determining the county infrastructure and planning and process development to use county best practices so that we can easily report on this. As of right now, the trust has not released any additional guidance outside of Exhibit E, but we felt it was important to us to be able to have our internal processes well-established so that when that guidance is released, whatever it is, that we have our processes in place for clean and accurate reporting. And as Diane mentioned, all the projects that have launched and began, and these contracts that are on agenda today are critical to get these contracts fully executed and the money into the hands of the provider so we can start making an impact in the community. And then this last item on this slide is the opioid settlement program manager. Earlier this year, this position was created, and I am humbled and honored to be in this role. As somebody who has been affected by the opioid epidemic, I take this job very seriously, and I just want to do a good job and really make a difference in this community so other people don't have to lose their loved ones to this disease. So, next slide. And ongoing and future plans. And ongoing and future plans. We are currently in discussions with our project, hopefully, our project evaluator. This potentially project evaluator will be focusing on our Bucks County projects, and the intention of this is to determine the effectiveness of our projects, and hopes to guide better future project funding, based on, you know, the outcome of this evaluation. The Opioid Advisory Committee continues to meet. We are currently working on scheduling our next meeting, probably late September, early October. We are actively working on getting a county webpage on our county website that is going to be dedicated to providing updates to our community, full transparency, and that will hopefully be uploaded soon. And like I said, it's just for transparency purposes, so you can always check back to see any updates to the plan, or anything that is new or has been launched. We plan to have updates on the monies that we've spent, so the expenditures, that is not released yet, but again, we're working on it. And we continue to have communication with the Commissioners. We have a meeting set later this month with potentially some small tweaks to our plan, which, if they are approved, you know, we will make that transparent to the public and have it posted, so they are aware of any changes made to the Opioid Advisory Committee Plan. We are getting sub-grantee agreements fully executed, which again, is very exciting to us. That $1.4 billion sub-grantee contract that's on agenda today is critical for us to get these fully executed and get the money to our community. And with that, we continue to have meetings with our providers to go over the expectations, so that they are aware that they are going to have reporting requirements, and hold them to a high expectation that these funds are utilized to serve, you know, the people that are intended to serve. We are planning future meetings with the Opioid Advisory Committee to work through how we're going to spend future funds and update this Opioid Advisory Committee Plan. So, that will be in the works for later this year. And as Diane had mentioned, the mini-grants. We have a committee of five individuals. We are in the final process of making our recommendations for who are awarded. We were delighted to receive 21 applications for these mini-grants, this mini-grant RFP. We just have some final pieces that we need for some of the applications, and we should be sending out those award notices soon, so we're really excited about that. And I think that's all for today. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Comments or questions from Commissioners?
No.
No? Okay. Yeah, tremendous amount of work. You know, certainly, this started, you know, well before us, the national level, different attorneys general, from 26, 27 states, or something like that, across the country, getting together and settling the suit with this opioid fund that's, you know, over a billion dollars, and Pennsylvania getting its, oh, it's $26 billion, so Pennsylvania gets over a billion dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, our cut is about, you know, as you heard, about 45 million, somewhere in the mid-40s in terms of millions of dollars. And for the Opioid Advisory Committee members, we thank them for their work, from Diane Rosati, Rachel Neff, who isn't here today, Shannon Kirby. We are very happy that you're in the position you're in. Sometimes, decisions in government are not that hard. They're pretty easy, and knowing that you had an interest in that position, I think none of the three Commissioners hesitated for more than maybe a fraction of a second to say yes. I think we're falling over each other to say yes before, as we're getting asked that question about you. So, thank you for your work, and we look forward to this getting launched. We look forward to working with all the nonprofit partners, with our police departments, and municipalities, and hospitals, and everybody else, because this is a problem that affects everybody, affects every community. Certainly, we know it affects the prison, and if you really are actually serious about addressing issues like crime, and don't just say it for a microphone, then you probably need to focus on opioids and drug addiction. And so, that's what we're doing here. So, appreciate all that work. So, we have two items, or actually, more than that, we have two major departments, but one, two, three, five items on the regular agenda, 12 through 13D. If there are no comments or questions, is there a motion to approve the regular agenda?
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to personnel actions. Commissioners' list. Are there any comments or questions about the Commissioners' list of the personnel actions? If not, is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For other subjects, three contributions. NAMI Bucks County, $2,500. New Creations of Life Incorporated at $1,000. Pearl Buck Foundation, $20,000. Is there a motion to make those contributions?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Operating Officer, Ms. McKevitt?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just have one item that I'd like to report on. We had two fires over the past month, one at the Oxford Valley Golf Course, and then another one this past Sunday at a barn property we own in Doylestown Township. I want to thank General Services for their time and their effort getting these buildings back in working condition, and of course, the firefighters that responded extremely quickly. The Doylestown Township fire could have been much worse than it was this weekend, and we're very happy that they were there and put it out as quickly as they did. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Comments or support? Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Sure. First, I'd like to begin. Mr. Warren, I apologize, I didn't answer your question earlier with regard to special counsel. First, with regard to that position in particular, it hasn't been filled since mid-May. I don't have any immediate plans to fill it. There are actually several vacancies on my personnel table, and I'm only actively hiring for one position, which is to replace someone who recently left the county, to join, very excitingly, the Attorney General's Office. In terms of my report, just one item to report, which is that the Board held its standing executive session yesterday, August 15th, with staff and legal counsel present to discuss personnel matters, and also to receive confidential legal advice about both pending and prospective litigation. That completes my report.
Okay. Thank you. I move on to public comments. Let's hear it.
Bob and Diane, set the priorities for what benefits taxpayers of Bucks County. Number one is law enforcement. The sheriff should have been granting employees on his first asking. We all know crime is up. Maybe take away this sanctuary status, so illegals can't come here. Every city run by Democrats has become a crime-ridden hellhole. Can't hide it anymore. You can find money to sue mothers who won the right to know. Using taxpayer money against a taxpayer is lawfare against the citizens, tyranny at the local level. Let's solve the problems, government programs just don't work. Get rid of the DEA program. It's a Marxist ideology and only creates division amongst the people. Stop funding the climate chain hoax. It's a total waste of money. Spending $400,000 on a career-length luxury van and staffing it is a total waste of money. It's not the county's job to get people to jobs. Free-market capitalism really does work. Going back to paper ballots only will save tons, no extra storage or maintenance needed. Solution to all this mental illness: stopped indoctrinating children and trying to sexualize them in our schools. Our parents are to teach the values. Stop the mandated childhood vaccines that are toxic. That will really cut down mental illness and drug use. The mainstream media, politicians, and indoctrinating children are what's causing all these problems that you throw millions at. It's totally disgusting how far the Left will go to destroy the family unit. Like, put God back in the school and kick Saint now. It's very cost-effective. Our founding fathers never intended for politicians to mandate toxic jabs, mask-wearing, six feet apart, shutting down schools, churches, small business, and destroying people's livelihoods. You constantly gaslight the citizens and do not let us participate in our own county. By not holding a town hall, so all citizens can attend, you show your true colors of corrupt politicians. You are not to dictate, you are to repri-
Ed Mackhouse?
Ed Machouse again, on crime and drugs. I'd like to comment the Narcan distribution here, the presentation on the use of opioid funds. The problem, we can take that example and sue the vaccine manufacturers for the harm that they caused, like the pilots now were forced to vaccines can no longer meet the same physical requirements, and the deaths that occur from these vaccines. So, there should be a settlement with them, and also with the medical transgender industry that causes untold injuries to people. Moms for Liberty and the Gays Against Grooming are leaders in this. There's a website from Walt Hoyer, it says SexChangeRegrets.com. People are realizing the harm they get from this sex change stuff. There's an actress, Charlize Theron, single mom, adopted two black boys, now they're transgender girls. I don't think transgendering people is the solution. It's a million dollars for these surgeries, and it causes unending harm to people. They die earlier, and the stuff they do for puberty blockers causes harm, the hormones they use is addictive, and the surgeries are not successful. God creates our sex, we cannot change it. We can change the way people look. You can dress people as girls, that causes trauma, which ends up making people transgender. The solution is not the surgeries, but to help them address the traumas and the problems that cause them to want to be transgender in their first place. Thank you very much.
Robert McLean?
Robert McLean, Milford Township. I'll be reading from the Old Testament book of Psalms, Psalm 1. Blessed is the man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful; but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law doth he meditate day and night. And he shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water, that bringeth forth his fruit in his season. His leaf shall not wither, and whatsoever he doeth shall prosper. The ungodly are not so, but are like the chaff which the wind driveth away. Therefore, the ungodly shall not stand in the judgment, nor sinners in the congregation of the righteous; for the Lord knoweth the way of the righteous, but the way of the ungodly shall perish. Thank you.
Jamie Walker?
Hi. I'm here to let the residents of Bucks County know that Commissioner Marsaglia and Harvey are still suing me to hide the emails from Commissioner Marsaglia's second government-funded email account. Those emails will show that the Commissioners illegally changed the health guidance that kept children out of school, and the Commissioners are asking a judge to make the entire state of Pennsylvania less transparent for their citizens. Why don't the Commissioners tell the taxpayers how much money you've spent hiding the emails I've already won? I also wanted to thank Pam Van Blanck and the sheriff for securing a school resource officer for Central Bucks West. It's unimaginable that the CB Regional Police Commission, led by Mayor Brian Wallace, would deny having a school resource officer while alerting the whole world that one high school in Central Bucks would not be secured. So, I am glad that Pam Van Blanck and the sheriff worked to get the school resource officer, even after Commissioner Harvey and Marsaglia denied staffing to get the 8,000 warrants for the criminals on the streets of Bucks County. It's obvious you did not care about our children during COVID, now you don't care about our safety. I also had another question. At the last meeting, Commissioner Harvey, you stated Central Bucks does not protect children. So, I took that as you're saying the parents, some of them probably in this room, are ill-equipped to care for our children. Or, did you mean the school staff, the teachers, none of them can protect children? You need to stop with your passive-aggressive statements against parents and our school district, and you guys need to stop politicizing our children, which you've been doing since August 23rd, 2021.
Funny. It's not funny.
Uh, let's see. Joe Frederick? I'm sorry, I skipped. Leave Lasplum, I apologize. I gotta start wearing my glasses.
Good morning. Leave Lasplum, Buckingham Township. Although I sit on the school board for Central Bucks today, I just represent my own opinions. I was also motivated to come in and speak by some comments that were made at the last meeting. So, I wanted to thank, before I begin, I want to thank Harvey and Marsaglia for following the lead of our salary board and approving the, and working together with them to approve the deputy to be placed in the schools at CB West. So, thank you. Safety of our children and the entire community should never be political like the way the Central Bucks Police Commission made it with their nonsensical, ever-changing excuses to cover up a political agenda. It appears that you want to also play political games with comments that were made at the last meeting that were unnecessary. If you are going to be politically posturing, and if you're not going to be focusing on politics, then I do think it's important that you do support the other deputies that were asked for by our sheriff. I know you've been coming out and supporting and recognizing the importance of putting safety first, so I would encourage you then, if that's really your stance and really what you're for, to please consider those additional deputies that really do keep our community safe. I also want to just ask you to consider also your co-responder program. Does that take away from the deputies by implementing that program? Are you by default not having the money to spend all the deputies that were denied?
Okay. Joe Frederick?
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to, again, thank you for the new mental health diversion, and I call it the Treatment Center. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for this project that will hopefully treat many adults who have recurring mental health issues that causes them to come in contact continually with criminal justice system. If we can keep these folks out of jail and put into a program where they can get treatment right away, it may save us a lot of taxpayers' dollars and a lot of heartache for them and their families. The, one question, if you can answer it, what would be the savings to the county if these individuals are diverted to this new program versus being incarcerated? Another statement was made recently that the facility was only designed to handle seven individuals and was a waste of taxpayer money, which should have been spent on schoolchildren. It will serve 28 individuals, and Governor Shapiro has allotted $100 million for schools in his current budget for mental health for schools. So, again, thank all of you, all you Commissioners, for what you've done for that, and especially you, Commissioner Marsaglia. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Yaus? Liz Yaus.
Liz Yaus, Northampton Township. Mr. Harvey, you say you follow Act 77 election law. There's a part of the law that talks about central tabulation as opposed to processing mail-in ballots at the precinct level. This law, this part of the law says that each county board of elections may centrally tabulate, it does not say shall centrally tabulate. There are three Pennsylvania counties, I believe these counties are Fayette, Forest, and Bradford. These counties process mail-in ballots at the precinct level. So if a person were to come in to vote in person and if we were to find a mail-in ballot that had already been sent in, then we could find it and spoil it and the person could vote in person. Local oversight is the best way to have true election integrity. In the 2020 election, I'm getting some information from Audit the Vote PA. In the 2020 general election in Pennsylvania, 7,35,746 ballots were counted, but the voter participation was 6,914,556. That means that there were 121,240 more ballots than voters. This is also from Audit the Vote PA, Bucks County 2020 election nominees. Over 2,000 duplicate registrations, over 2,000 inactive voters, 770 mail-in ballots were recorded but do not have any voter ID in the sure system. 1,200-plus mail-in ballots recorded that were sent out of state. The voter registration, the voter rolls have to be cleaned up and we need clear and transparent.
Thank you. Lori Katz.
Our U.S. government was initially set up and collected taxes in large part to protect our borders. Now we have no borders. In 2021, there was a huge campaign to push COVID shots for personal and community safety. Eight million anonymous people have already illegally entered our country between 2021 and 2023 and did not have to get the COVID shot. Pennsylvania has 67 counties. Did you know that there were just three counties that forced their employees to get the experimental COVID shot in order to keep their county jobs? Philadelphia, Allegheny, and Bucks. That was a decision made by these Democrat-controlled commissioners. If you want to keep your county job a roof over your head and food on the table, you must bend to their requirement. Sadly, there's a tidal wave of information coming out about the side effects from these shots. I am hopeful they will stop pressuring people to get boosters. I think it's important to let our citizens know that our county sheriff, Haran, has 8,000 outstanding warrants to serve and requested eight new hires to help accomplish this. Diane, you should be listening. The Democrat commissioners voted against this in November of 2022. You should hear his impassioned plea as crime has been up sharply and his concern for Bucks County residents is serious. What's more important than our safety? Physical safety is a nonpartisan issue and everyone in Bucks County wants that. Commissioner Marsaglia and Commissioner Harvey actually wanted him to fundraise himself for these positions at a total cost, stop laughing Diane, of $750,000. It seems they thought this was excessive, however, in July 2022, they spent $400,000 on a career-linked vehicle. They could have used that money for four new sheriffs. I'd like you to explain that to us. Why was...
Stop going out.
No, we have...
Stop screaming from the back, please. Man, we don't control, we don't control the time, okay? The guys in the back control the time, I don't, you know. Ma'am. Ma'am. Ms. Katz, Ms. Katz, please sit down. Ms. Katz. All right. Vana Darnan.
First, thank you for working with the salary board to approve the SRO for CB West. The SRO will be fully funded by the Central Bucks School District. So that's great. However, Ms. Marsaglia, Mr. Harvey, you often are making comments that are negative against we citizens and elected officials making public comment. It is as if you want to shame us or to intimidate us into not making comments. The comments are often passive-aggressive. During the last salary board meeting, 8/23, you accused the commenters and Controller Pam Van Blunt, Sheriff Haran, of making a commercial, right? That the comments were unnecessary because we're all in agreement about safety of children. Well, those passive-aggressive comments were unnecessary. Then you stated that you didn't, that same people that are asking for the SRO, me being one of them, also has said that we didn't want the county involved during the, during COVID, during the pandemic, and that's untrue. We welcomed Dr. Damsker into Central Bucks School District for his recommendations and guidance, but you all put political pressure on him and turned the situation into debacle, leading to moms needing to write to no emails, that you now waste taxpayer dollars to fight in the courts to keep those emails from coming to light. I don't understand why that is still happening, but I think the taxpayers do need to understand that it is not some frivolous thing. Those emails should be released. There shouldn't be any issue with releasing those emails, they were legally won. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of comments, just to respond. First, hmm? Did I miss you, Mr. Warren? I apologize. I need to start wearing my glasses. Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
I've been overlooked many times. No, bro. Two real quick things. Thank you to the solicitor. I picked up on that and I was ready to blame him for not answering, but very good, I appreciate it. And I've been coming at various times to these since the mid-1970s. I've never had, I don't think ever, where there'd been no row officers until you showed up, so congratulations. Two quick, two quick points. One, since the floods, has the county Board of Assessment been involved with helping any of the townships or, it would seem to me at some point, the Board of Assessment would be the one. And the other, my last point is for all three of you, well, all three and a half. I read in the paper that there may be a debate, provided three out of four of you accept it. I am here to implore each and every one of you to please accept that. We've had for months people calling for public participation. Well, now's the chance for the public to do it. My only question or concern is, what I read was the Doylestown Borough Hall was the venue. They have about 100 seats. By the time you candidates, your handlers, and spouses are there, or significant others, there's only going to be about 50 seats available. Even in this room, there's 139 seats. So my point is, congratulations, absolutely follow through with the debate, but let's try and get somewhere where more than you and your next-door neighbor can attend.
All right. Okay. Apologies again for overlooking you. All right, so just going back a little bit. In terms of the foundations of this country, a couple of people commenting on the foundations of the country, you know, it was actually General George Washington actually did mandate vaccines for his soldiers. And anybody who thinks there's no prayer in school was never in my classroom when I was giving final exams. In terms of the couple of comments, of course, we're getting closer to November, about right-to-no requests, always, it's always curious to me how they avoid mentioning the thousands of pages that we've already turned over. So in terms of, interesting to hear, you know, sort of a lot of questioning and people seemingly coming out against the idea of coresponders. I know that Commissioner Marsaglia's been working with Central Bucks School District on actually adding coresponders as part of this whole program so that you'll have county, you know, mental health workers who can bounce around among the schools and provide assistance. You know, so we'll see where that goes. In terms of the, just a correction, maybe Mr. Frederick talked about 28 people being served at the diversion assessment rehabilitation treatment center. That's actually more, we have 28 beds, so throughout the course of the year, it could be more than 28 people because, you know, people come, people go, in and out. I am going to ask just, Mr. Kratz, just to talk a little bit, because the idea of that facility, which is different than one Ms. Rosati mentioned, which is the crisis center. And it is a little confusing because there's two facilities being constructed, they're both in Doylestown Township. One on the campus, as she said, of Doylestown Hospital is really for people who are in crisis and just need, you know, whether it's struggling, you know, for substance abuse or substance problems or mental health. The facility we're building, we broke ground on, that Mr. Frederick referenced, is connected to the criminal justice system. So it's for people who are in the criminal justice system who are suffering from mental health issues or substance abuse, well, specifically mental health issues, but also substance abuse. Just, if you don't mind, Mr. Kratz, just talk a little bit about the challenges you face in the prison and especially since you've been working there a long time, how that's changed over time and how this facility is going to be helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner. So mental health in prisons and jails, big thing. It's not just Bucks County, it's really across all the counties. Services in the community are scarce, to say the least, so the last stop is your jails. And I want to be clear, a lot of these cases are minor offenses, so they're, your defiant trespasses, your retail thefts, your homeless and mentally ill person. There are serious criminals that do come in with mental health needs, but these folks are coming into our system. The cost, I think somebody asked about the cost, right? I mean, it's very expensive, the cost of housing these folks, medicating these folks, dealing with medication compliance, lawsuits that are surrounding mental health, people in incarceration are blossoming across the Commonwealth, that's a hidden cost right there. We do very well, but it's already taxing a system that is really overly taxed. We are, we're a jail. I mean, we're there to hold folks in lieu of bail and to serve sentences on offenses that don't rise to a state incarceration. So a lot of your resources are being channeled into mental health, unfortunately. We have to take care of these folks, we can't say no when they come to our door. We work the process as best we can, the district attorney, mental health in the county, everybody's got a hand in trying to get these folks restored and out the door, but that's not what we're designed to do, we're a jail. But the numbers in mental health, when I started 20 years ago, were very small, very small, eight, 10, 15. You know, right now, I report a prison board, our mental health census with some type of mental health disorder is above 200, okay? And that doesn't necessarily mean it's a severe psychotic person, but those numbers are up too. So having this center is a key. I think it's one of the first in the Commonwealth and I think you're going to have to see some changes across the Commonwealth. When I go to a conference and talk to other jailers, this is a big thing for us. And again, we're prison guards, we're not clinicians, we're not doctors, we're not nurses, we're not social workers. You know, we develop some compassion and try to deal with it, but it's a big problem. And again, the cost is just going to continue to add up as community services, community inpatient beds. The police departments are out there struggling. These folks are in the community not getting help. You know, they live in your community, they may be a nuisance eventually, the community gets tired of it, they're going to get booked with that retail theft, with that trespassing. Coresponders are able to divert a couple of those folks, but for the most part involuntary beds and even voluntary beds are just very scarce throughout the county, so it's a big problem.
Thank you. And as you mentioned, the co-responder program, as you heard from the sheriff, from the police chiefs who were here last week, you know, is a huge help to our police departments and we're proud that unanimously, that was something that we approved and has expanded from one department now to half the departments and is going to expand even more. So we're looking forward to that as well. With regard to, you know, the election process, certainly we know that the three counties that were cited are incredibly small population. I think one of them has a population smaller than Ben Salem and it's a county. One of them may actually have a population smaller than Falls Township, which is, you know, the township I oversaw. So how they, you know, are allowed to count their ballots is a little bit different than us. But in terms of spoiling ballots, you can already do that at the local level, it's something that is allowed. If someone who has a mail-in ballot decides they want to vote in person, they bring their mail-in ballot, the return envelope, secrecy envelope to eternity and it's spoiled, they vote in person. It's a pretty simple process. And you can also vote provisionally, which is also something that's pretty simple. In terms of people who vote, the process here is, first off, of course, there is the listing of people who registered to vote. You know, the e-poll books have everyone's name listed, you walk in, you give your name, they check, they make sure you're registered to vote. If you're not registered on that list, you can vote provisionally and then it's checked afterwards. Following that process, what has to happen is that every single person who voted has to be re-scanned afterwards. It takes, well, it used to take a couple of months, it might be faster now with the e-poll books, to make sure that the number of votes that were cast matched the number of votes people who walked in matches the number of people who were checked in. There is duplication, triplication of this entire process and so whether some conspiracy theorist-based website is saying nonsense is just, you know, quite frankly, damaging to this country and it has been for a long time. So in terms of, a couple of people again attacking our effort to help find people work, you know, it's interesting, you can complain about the economy and say things related with the economy, but when we try to help people find jobs, you know, we're not, we're stepping outside our lane. I don't understand that part of the process. It may have something to do with the people where they're from who are complaining, certainly. You know, people who live in wealthier areas don't see the problem as much and don't care as much as, you know, as we have to, because we serve everybody in this county. Regarding, a couple of comments, just some clarification, the new employees for the sheriff's office did not cost $750,000, it cost a million dollars. And so that money was added to the budget by this board unanimously in January and so the sheriff has been free to add that staff since January. So finally, with the flood assistance, we have been working, Mr. Warren just left, we have been working with, through our systems and working with state officials to try and look for ways to assist those people who were very, very negatively affected by the flood, people who didn't have flood insurance and suffered tremendous damage. While there were people who did suffer damage, got floodnose and flooding in their basement, there were, the number of properties that were really heavily affected is pretty small. And so we are working toward finding some resources that we can use, talking with Pima and the Small Business Association a couple of weeks ago when they were out doing their tour of the damage. So it is something that we're focused on. It's really not the Board of Assessment that deals with that, it would be the county. So it is something we're focused on trying to do what we can to help, similar to what we did two years ago when flooding affected people in Ben Salem, Bristol Borough, and Bristol Township. That flooding was much more significant, damaged a whole lot more properties. So this, at least on the property level, was not nearly as bad, although obviously in terms of loss of life, it's probably the worst natural disaster in the history of this county. So, all right, so I think addresses the questions and issues. All right, we'll move on with our agenda, which is Commissioner Comment. Commissioner Deidre Alamo, any comments?
Real quick, I went to Bishop Beegan High School in Levittown and I graduated 1968, believe it or not, it's going to be 55 years ago. Believe it or not, it's going to be 55 years ago. And listening to the presentation from Diane and her staff about, you know, how they're going to spend the money for the drugs, and I, I was thinking that I went through grade school and high school, and I never heard anybody talk about any kind of drugs till I was a senior in high school. And some of the kids started talking about, there was a party, and there was, they had marijuana at the party. It's back in 1968, you know, of course, 55 years ago. And I, I just can't help but think, when I look at the enormous amount of money, and rightfully so, that we're spending to try, to fight this drug epidemic. And I think of our children in high school, and unfortunately, in grade school, and the temptations that they have as they're going through school, and the pressures that they're probably under from some of their friends and acquaintances about experimenting with all the different kinds of drugs that are out there. And, and, and it just, it, it's just unbelievable to me that our poor children have to go through this, but unfortunately, they do. And we're trying to very best we can here in the county, and I think we're doing a really good job of trying to help fight this epidemic, especially when it comes to our children. But, boy, the pressure they must be under. I mean, one can only imagine. And I, and I look at some of the money being spent on a mobile prevention education unit. And I know Ben Salem Township, as was commented, has one, and we're going to have one as a county, and this unit is not for the kids. It's not for the kids, it's for the parents. It's for the parents to go into this bedroom, this mobile unit, and see some of the kids, some of the things that their children might be doing. So all hands on deck when it comes to fighting this epidemic. It really is. It's just terrible to think the pressures and temptations our children are under today from these drugs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marsaglia?
Just a couple of things, well, really just one topic I want to talk about, and it's interesting because it has to do with the politics of being up here. I just watched as the people that you've been hearing give public comment walked out of the room, so it proves to me that they're just here to make a show. But I, I wanted to tell you that I had spoken to Sheriff Haran, I guess, before our last Salary Board meeting, and he told me he got a call from his political party wanting to know if, that he wanted the people that were here today to come to our Salary Board meeting and talk in favor of a school resource officer. And he said no, he didn't want to turn it into a circus. You know, he knew he had support for this, and there was no problem. But I guess because he's not here today, everybody decided they would just come and give misinformation. And I was really shocked, because there was a school board member here today who was completely misinformed on what coresponders are, as well as school resource officer process. They said things like, "We're glad that you worked with the Salary Board." Well, we are the Salary Board, but the controller sits on the Salary Board with us. I made the motion for the school resource officer, and Commissioner Harvey seconded that motion. So to come up here and be so disingenuous and say that you're thanking someone else for it, it's, it's just, it's really unbelievable and rude. I remember in 2017, there was another sheriff here, and he and I and another person on the Salary Board motioned to add seven or eight new deputies to the Sheriff Department. I learned a lesson that day. Salary Board is just a recommendation. It's the commissioners that do the hiring, because when those positions went in front of another majority commissioners then, he didn't get any of those positions. So Salary Board did make a recommendation back in November for sheriff deputies, and Commissioner Harvey spent the time during the budget to find a million dollars out of the judge's budget that they weren't using and to transfer it over to the sheriff, so that when we voted on the Manning table in the beginning of January, we had included those eight sheriff deputy positions and then added the school resource officer. So we, we adopted the budget, we adopted the Manning table, and we will continue, once the sheriff is able to start finding people for those jobs, to hire them. It's important that we talk about the truth up here, and this is the last thing I want to say about that. There were some ridiculous comments about crime. We took over in 2020. The violent crime rate in Bucks County is below what it was in 2019. And we have, of the collar counties of Philadelphia, Bucks County has the lowest crime rate. That's why people want to live here. People don't want their property values to go down, because people come to meetings and say that there's a high crime rate, especially when it isn't true. And the final thing I want to say is that that bus that we're talking about, the, the project for people who are looking for jobs, it's actually the opposite. It's actually for employers who are looking for employees. That's the problem today, and I think we're all pretty aware of that. And you can't take money that's going to go for a van that has to do with job training that comes from one grant and spend it on a grant for coresponders. It's just basic government that everyone should understand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just want to comment a little bit on, on some of the things we've done today. You heard about the $1.7 million roughly that's going to fight the opioid epidemic, but 100 and, almost $150,000 for agriculture preservation, to preserve 119, over 119-acre property in Springfield Township. This county has about 24% of its land area preserved in some way, shape, or form. $500,000 roughly for behavioral health development programs. It's for adults and children who have different physical or intellectual challenges. About 685 thou, excuse me, $2.2 million, sorry, on children and youth. About $500,000 is being expended for housing and community development, and the Planning Commission is looking for a grant that would be about $1.8 million to expand a trail network in the lower end of the county. That's just what was done today. And so you talk about the kinds of things we're doing, you know, and certainly, I actually, you know, those might surprise him, and maybe he'll stop doing it, but actually, you know, I kind of enjoy Mr. McLean coming and giving passages in the Bible. I've read the whole Bible. I taught world religions for almost 26 years. And so it's, you know, it's, it's, we talk about, you know, helping the poor, protecting the children, caring for the earth, and those are things that we did today, you know, so I'm proud of that. Speaking of the earth, and speaking of farms, the Grange Fair does, has started, what time is it, a couple hours ago? It does run through Sunday. I'm sure a lot of people, you know, in this room have been there, you know, at different times. Certainly, I know a lot of families go. It's a lot of fun to go, and it's, I think, a good reminder that agriculture is still a big industry in this county. It's still a huge industry, the biggest one in the Commonwealth and in the country. And it's easy to forget that as we kind of get, especially this time of year, when we like to just be, you know, kind of stay inside where the air conditioning is, you know, but, you know, we do have, you know, a very big industry here in this county, and a lot of farmers who produce a lot of food and produce a lot of products that, you know, do contribute to economic development, not just for themselves. But it's interesting that as anybody, you know, I'm, I'm not a drinker, but for people who, you know, go to craft breweries or go to the different, these little pop-up distilleries and the small places that have been opening up in a lot of places, you know, a lot of them are trying to locally source the grains they use when they're making, you know, whatever they're making. And so they're looking to Bucks County farmers to provide, you know, whatever, you know, products they need to make, you know, whatever, it's, it's rye whiskey, or it's some kind of IPA, or something like that. So, you know, that, that growth in that industry is connected, you know, to the other. So encourage you to go out to the Grange Fair, you know, and go on the rides and check out all the animals, and, and there's a lot of people, a lot of, especially young people who put a lot of effort into raising animals and, and sort of showing them and competing, and it's certainly something we should celebrate. So thank you, everybody, for their time, and for everybody who put the meeting together. Is our motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I can, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.